I'll call this meeting of the Bellevue City Council to order. This is a special meeting of the Bellevue City Council to consider a quasi-judicial matter. It is October 16th. Begin just with a little bit of an introductory remark to try to take the parties and those who are here and those who are watching at home or as to how we're going to proceed tonight. We're holding what is called a limited public hearing to consider the appeal of the hearing examiner's decision that would approve with conditions Puget Sound Energy's application for a conditional use permit for the South Bellevue segment of the Energize East Side project. Appeals in this matter were filed by SENS and they are represented by Attorney Richard Aramburu, CSE, and if that's not the way you want me to say it, CSCE, is represented by Attorney Larry Johnson, and by Warren Halverson, Norm Hanson, and Loretta Lopez, each representing themselves as individuals in this case. In addition to these five appellants, the other parties to the proceeding are the applicant, which is Puget Sound Energy, and they are represented by Erin Anderson and Sarah Leverett. And the city is represented by Matt McFarlane and Cheryl Zakruski. I also want to say something just right out of the gate here. While there is a motion to delay the hearing, no matter what, if we go ahead with the hearing tonight, we will not be making a decision tonight. This is a voluminous record. We are still working our way through that, council members are, and so we will not be making a decision tonight. We will be taking it under advisement. So I just want to make sure that people understand that. Councilmember Robertson is absent tonight. Some of you may notice that. Councilmember Robertson has decided to recuse herself from this hearing under the appearance of fairness doctrine, and that is due to ongoing business negotiations that are going between PSE and Robertson and Associates LLC. That is a company that Councilmember Robertson is a member of the company. The parties to the appeal were informed in writing of her decision on September 16th, so exactly a month ago. However, I just wanted to make sure that we put that on the record this evening. So, to provide a roadmap for the parties and for the appeal hearing, I'm going to, in just a few moments, go to the city attorney, ask her to explain the nature of these proceedings and the rules and procedures that the council has to follow in considering this appeal. Council will then take up the matter, and that also will ask the city attorney to walk through the appearance of fairness doctrine disclosures that the council will need to make, whether they can fairly try this case, and what they have done with any ex parte contact that we've had. We'll then take up the matter of PSE's objection to the council considering the briefs that were filed by Mr. Halverson, Ms. Lopez, and Mr. Hanson. After that, the council will address the requests by SENS and CSCE received yesterday that would continue the hearing to a later date. If the council decides not to continue the hearing to a later date, council will then open the public hearing and hear oral argument from the parties to the appeal. So Ms. Gurla, I'm going to ask you now to take over and explain the nature of the proceedings and then take us through the fairness doctrine issues.
Thank you, Mayor Chalmak. The proceeding tonight is a quasi-judicial proceeding. It is a limited public hearing on the appeals that have been filed of the hearing examiner's approval with conditions of PSE's application for conditional use permit for the South Bellevue segment of the Energize East Side project. What a quasi-judicial proceeding means is that the council is not acting in this matter in a policymaking or legislative role, as you are often used to seeing the council act. Instead, the role of the council members in this particular proceeding is to act as judges. And so this limited public appeal hearing is confined to the issues decided by the hearing examiner and to the evidence in the record that was created before the hearing examiner. Only the parties to the appeal, who are represented by either themselves or by council sitting at the tables at the front, will be allowed to speak tonight. Members of the audience here, other than the parties, will not be allowed to speak to the council, as again, the council may only consider the evidence presented before the hearing examiner. The council's role in this proceeding is not to make the decision in the first instance as to whether the conditional use permit should be issued. Instead, the council's role is to determine whether the hearing examiner's decision is supported by material and substantial evidence in the record. In this context, evidence is material if there is a reasonable probability that the presence or absence of the evidence would alter the decision by the fact finder. And evidence is substantial if there's a sufficient quantity of evidence to persuade a fair-minded person of the truth or correctness of the decision. So in essence, the council is sitting as an appellate body in this instance to determine if there is material and substantial evidence in the record. The appellants bear the burden of proof in this appeal, and the council may only grant the appeal, in other words, reverse the decision of the hearing examiner, or grant it with modifications, if the appellants have carried their burden of proof and the city council finds that the decision is not supported by material and substantial evidence. In all other cases, the appeal must be denied, meaning the hearing examiner's decision must be upheld. And in making its decision, the council is required to give substantial weight to the hearing examiner's decision. So after, we will hear several motions, we go through ex parte communications and appearance of fairness, and hear several motions, and then the council will open what's called the limited public hearing, where the parties will then have an opportunity to present oral argument based on the hearing examiner's record. Each side will have 30 minutes for opening. The appellants will proceed first and have 30 minutes for their opening argument and for rebuttal, and then the respondents, Puget Sound Energy and the Development Services Department, will then have 30 minutes for their oral argument. And after the respondents are finished, then the appellants will be permitted to make a rebuttal argument if they chose to set aside time for rebuttal. The council may ask questions of the parties during their oral argument. However, new material that's not in the record made before the hearing examiner cannot be presented tonight to the council, and any such material, if it is presented, will be disregarded by the council in making its decision. So I will be happy to answer any questions of the council on the rules and procedures for moving forward with the hearing in this matter.
Are there any questions for the city attorney on the rules moving forward? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward. You're going to do the appearance of fairness, and then the issue about is there a response to any of, I don't think I mentioned it, but would that be when we would take up any response to any, I'm sorry, rebuttal of the items? So we'll take, that's one thing that I left off, although I guess it was included in the, we'll allow some time if, yes, okay.
Right now. Okay, all right. So moving to the appearance of fairness doctrine and the need to disclose ex parte communications. So as I mentioned, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and the council members are acting as judges. And because of that, the provisions of the state's appearance of fairness doctrine come into play here. And judges must, and therefore council members in this proceeding, must maintain fairness and impartiality in the case. Judges may not engage in what is known as ex parte or off-the-record contact with proponents or opponents of a project in order so that they can maintain their impartiality. And local government officials must disclose all ex parte contacts that they have with the applicant or members of the public, whether it's verbal exchanges or emails or other writings on the topic of this particular application. And if the council members acting in a quasi-judicial capacity cannot exclude ex parte information from their consideration and base their decision solely on the record and affirm that they will maintain their impartiality, then they are to be recused from participating in the decision. Staff have searched all emails that were at the council's email box and at the individual council member's city email addresses, and we've identified approximately 18 emails that we've identified as potential ex parte emails. Those have been disclosed already to the parties or the representatives of the parties, so they've had them. And so at this point, I am going to go through with each individual council member and ask about ex parte contacts, but you don't need to disclose those that we've already found. You only need to disclose any contacts that you have received other than through your city email accounts. And if you do have any additional ex parte communications to disclose, then a council member should state, you know, the name of who contacted you, the date or the approximate date of the contact, the method, whether it was by phone, in writing, in-person meeting, and the substance of the communication. And if a written or transcript of a voicemail exists, then those should be put in the record. We will maintain the emails and the verbal disclosures and preserve them for purposes of maintaining a record of what the ex parte contacts are, should there be a need for them in any subsequent legal proceeding, but their substance will not be considered by the council in making the council's decision. So at this point, unless there are any questions, I will start, Councilmember Stokes, with you and go through each, yes.
Could I ask one quick question with clarification? What is the, what is the date that we are looking at here for these ex parte contacts?
We have started from April 8th, 2019, which is the date that the hearing examiner's hearing was closed. So Councilmember Stokes, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose other than the ones that are in the council's email box or your individual council email box?
No, I do not.
Are you able to affirm that you can exclude any ex parte information from your consideration and make your decision based solely on the record before the hearing examiner in a fair and impartial manner?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Robinson, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose other than those in the city's email box or your individual city email box?
No, I do not.
Are you able to affirm that you can exclude any ex parte communication from your consideration and base your decision solely on the record before the hearing examiner in a fair and impartial manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Chalmak, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose?
I do not have any.
Can you affirm that you can exclude any ex parte information from your consideration, base your decision solely on the information in the hearing examiner's record in a fair and impartial manner?
I can.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose?
As a resident of Somerset, I went to the July 4th picnic, and I met a number of folks. And there's a table where one of the, uh...
Appellants.
Appellants has a table there. So I believe that I have maybe a couple of contacts, but I did not have any communication with them. I basically stated that, you know, it's a sensitive subject, and there was no discussion, no conversation regarding the topic.
Thank you. Are you able to affirm that you can decide, you can exclude any ex parte information and decide this matter based solely on the information in the, in the hearing examiner's record in a fair and impartial manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose?
I have one. So on June 13th, I participated in a editorial board with the Seattle Times, where one of the questions they wanted to ask me was about Energize East Side. I told them that I couldn't talk about it, and I waited until they were done to the next question. I can't tell you today what my, what the other candidate even said. I wasn't paying any attention. And then the article that came out on June 27th didn't actually talk about it at all, so I have no way to know what he actually said.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to exclude any ex parte information from your consideration and decide this matter based solely on the record before the hearing examiner in a fair and impartial manner?
Yes.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Nguyen-House, do you have any additional ex parte communications to disclose?
No, no, I do not.
Are you able to affirm that you can exclude any ex parte communication from your consideration of this matter, decide it based solely on the hearing examiner's record in a fair and impartial manner?
I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, under the appearance of fairness doctrine, the parties have an opportunity to rebut the substance, meaning oppose, if you have an opposing view of the substance of any of the ex parte communications. So I would offer the parties the opportunity to do that now. Okay, seeing none, that, that should close out this portion of the meeting tonight.
Thank you very much. Just a very quick procedural question. I'm very sorry for PSE. I don't know if you are Ms. Anderson or Ms. Leverett.
Oh, Ms. Anderson.
Perfect.
Is Leverett is here tonight?
Okay, thank you. I think I knew everybody else in the room, but I didn't. Thank you. So next, we will address the Puget Sound Energy's request that written briefs filed by the appellants Warren Halverson, Norm Hanson, and Loretta Lopez not be considered by the council. PSE has requested that the council not consider these briefs on the basis that they were not provided to all of the parties at the same time they were provided to the, to the council. PSE will have five minutes to present an oral argument, up to five minutes on this issue. Mr. Halverson, Mr. Hanson, and Ms. Lopez will also have five minutes. As a way of explaining this, I do want to thank the parties. You all agreed to provide your briefs three weeks in advance. That gave us, that gave the city attorney's office a significant amount of time to review that. They have to review to make sure things were in the record. So I very much appreciate you doing that. I also would point out that under the council's rules of procedures, appeals located, which is located in Resolution 9473, they require that any brief or written materials be provided to council and served on other parties no later than 1:00 p.m., two weeks before the appeal hearing, which in this case would be October 2nd. Due to the size of the record in this matter, I did ask for that request to have things three weeks in advance, but note that the service on other parties in the, in the resolution is two weeks. I understand that when the briefs were not provided to the other parties, there was contact that was made to the city, and that after that contact, the briefs were provided to PSE. So with that, I'm going to ask a quick procedural question. Who goes first on the five minutes?
It's PSE's request, and they go first.
Okay, so Ms. Anderson, if you would like to provide comment, you'll have five minutes, and just so, I think there's a countdown timer on it. The green light goes on, you are on the clock. Yellow light should go on at one minute. Red light means your time is up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor and Council, I have nothing further to add to my request. I believe it speaks for itself. We were instructed to provide these briefs on time to all parties, and they were not. I have nothing further to add beyond that. My intention in raising this issue was to preserve the record. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So the, the pro se appellants have five minutes to divide among yourselves. Do you want to do it all with one? Do you, because we can set the timing for you. You want to have all three, and so do you want us to set it?
Singularly.
Singularly? Okay, so, and we'll pause it in between. What time do you want to hand it off? Or you'll just, you'll just decide when to hand it off?
I've timed this four times, I think a minute and 30 seconds.
Perfect.
I'll hand it off.
Somehow I knew that.
I've been here before.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Halverson.
Okay. My name is Warren Halverson. I'm surprised that PSE wants to deny our briefs based upon their reading of Resolution 9473. However, I'm not surprised at their actions to limit public testimony from the record. From our perspective, here is what happened. On September 27th, Mrs. Leverett emailed the city objecting to our briefs and accurately quoting Resolution 9437. Quote, "Appeal may be submitted to the council by filing the same with the city clerk and serve copies on any briefs on other parties no later than 1:00 p.m., 14 days before the date of the hearing." This is the resolution. Did we comply? Absolutely. So what is the difference of opinion here? A while back, I received at my house an unusual call from the city saying this docket is so large that PSE and the city would like 21 days to review it. Frankly, that does not seem to be a big deal, a gentleman's agreement, if you will. Receiving no other correspondence, we complied filing our briefs with the city clerk on September 15th, notwithstanding the fact that we did not have the emails for the other parties. Two days later, Ms. Leverett sent her email asking the city clerk whether we had filed briefs by September 25th. The city responded that we did, and they are on file. That very same day, two days later, 19 days before we were really required, 19 days before the hearing, we sent, Mr. Aramburu sent copies of all briefs to Mrs. Leverett to meet this imposed deadline. Finally, on October 2nd, 14 days, 14 days before the hearing, we sent another copy of our briefs to all parties without further communication. We sent our briefs in. As to the legality of all this, it is clearly understood that the resolution states 14 days. Furthermore, Resolution 9473 is signed by the city council, and there is no authority that I can see to change this without a city council approval. In effect, then, to even suggest that briefs be withheld because of a two-day delay, 19 days, in a gentleman's agreement, when in addition the 14-day requirement was met, is outlandish. One can only conclude that PSE's sole purpose here and intent is to squelch public opinion, reduce transparency, and eliminate arguing this case and the merits of this case. We request denial of PSE's motion.
Thank you. We can pause the timing. Who would like to go next? Mr. Hanson.
Yes, I'll just be brief. I'll just say that at the outset of this, there didn't really seem to be a roadmap of who you send it to. We did send it to the city clerk and to the hearing examiner's office, and of course, we're not used to doing this, so we didn't know we had to send it to the, the PSE lawyer, but we did. We did all those in a, in a timely manner, and we did it in good faith, and I think the city has had the appropriate amount of time to review. So that's where I was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Ms. Lopez?
Loretta Lopez. Once again, 14 days, 14 days in advance. That's what we did. That's what the city council is required. With respect to whether the, I call mine a statement, I don't call it a brief. Why? There are no legal citations. It's two and a half pages. There isn't any brilliant legal analysis. It doesn't put them at any disadvantage. They have many, many lawyers, the city and PSE, all paid for us, the taxpayers, by the way. And my position is that it is outrageous to suggest that we should have to even address this issue here. And my position is the council should read our statements. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the argument on this particular case. My personal opinion is the record is very clear on the 14 days, and while I very much appreciate all sides getting the briefs in three weeks in advance, that's sort of my personal opinion is that they definitely, the three pro se appellants met both the letter and the spirit of what we're doing. I don't know if anyone has a different opinion, but if not, I would entertain a motion to deny.
It was that the council denied PSE's request that the briefs of Warren Halverson, Norm Hanson, and Loretta Lopez not be considered by the council.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the request. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion to deny carries. We are now, my book is mixed up. We are now, I believe, at the continuance of the hearing motion. Is that correct? Thank you. We just received this yesterday, a motion that was a request from SENS and CSSE to continue the appeal hearing to a later date. We also received PSE's objection to CSSE's request. Things are laid out fairly well, but again, in the interest of allowing people to, the parties to speak to this, I would allow SENS or, SENS and CSSE, and I would provide them five minutes if they wish to speak to the motion, and I would provide PSE five minutes if they wish to speak to the motion. And since the motion is from SENS and CSSE, they would go first. So Mr. Aramburu, and do you want to reserve some time for Mr. Johnson?
I'll let him decide that. I'm going to be very brief. Members of the council, I'm Richard Aramburu, and I'm here tonight representing SENS. We have made a request for a continuance of the hearing because we've had a lot of back and forth that's gone on over the past several days regarding the briefing, regarding recusal requests, regarding other materials. We think, given the complexity of the matter, that, that a continuance is, a short continuance is appropriate, and so we so move, and that's all I have to say. I don't want to burden the record anymore with that. If you have a question for me, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll pause the timing, and Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Deputy Mayor, council members. Larry Johnson for Citizens for St. East Side Energy, CSSE. Normally, when you get a motion for continuance, it's just because it's more convenient, you know, maybe we're not quite prepared. My concern, and it probably will be, become more evident in the brief argument I want to make as to the merits of my brief, which focuses almost exclusively on constitutional issues, because of, I think, the very misleading nature in which that was briefed by your attorney, where she says constitutional issues are not subject to the jurisdiction of the hearing examiner or this council. And she cites a case where actually the holding in that case is the absolute opposite. And I will get to that. I've got a slide for that. That should take me about 30 seconds. In a way, this motion to continue is a bit melded into the request that if you make a decision in this matter, that you consider sending this back to the hearing examiner for fixing a number of things, including constitutionally powerful arguments that this whole process has been completely tainted. And I dare say, this process here, and the appeal has been that way too. So I would like to give you, as decision makers, the opportunity to clean this up so we don't have to go through years of appeals through state and federal courts. We can fix this now. And so I would ask you, this is kind of a motion upon a motion, but I would ask you to consider this idea of a continuance more in terms of the bigger question of whether there should be a remand, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Anderson. Right. Is that?
I differ first to the city, with the city's decision.
On the, I thought, I don't, the city was not a party to the...
The city is a recipient of the motion.
But the Department of, the Development Services Department, which is a party here in front of the council, my understanding is, did not object, respond at all to the motions for a continuance, but PSE did, so we're simply giving you an opportunity, if you wish to say anything in objection to the motion for continuance, for PSE to do that now.
I'm happy to.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. To be clear, I'm not the attorney for the city. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and references to me as the city's attorney, as Mr. Johnson just made, are inaccurate. In regard to the motion for a continuance, this matter, we just heard about a gentleman's agreement that you would be afforded additional time to hear this case because of the voluminous record. We met those deadlines. The opposition gave you 19, gave us 19 days' notice of it. They delivered their materials to you. Even if it is a gentleman's agreement, you've already received additional time to review this record. Your code says 14 days. Your code says 14 days. This has been noted for a long period of time. You've had this for quite a considerable amount of time, and tossing out concepts of constitutionality are not the basis for you to extend this hearing any further. I would submit it remains a delay tactic, and tonight is the night, we need to get to rest tax, folks. You've got the record, you're not asked to make a decision tonight. I fully anticipate that this council will take this matter under advisement because it's a big record. You have a lot of material to read. That's not what this is about. This is about presenting oral argument on that record. You have all the time in the world to make your decision. There's no need for a continuance this evening.
Thank you very much. Well, again, I'll just begin with, I, this meeting has been set for a significant period of time, for this date. We do have a voluminous record. I have managed to read all of the, the appeal briefs. I don't know where other council members are on that, but if they haven't, they still have the time to do that, and we still have the time to go back and take a look at the record. Even if there was a decision to remand, that is something that we could do, and that's something that the council would have to do at a later date. So that would be part of the deliberation that we would make on this issue. That's my opinion. I'll let anybody else who has an opinion on that, if they wish to speak. So I would need a, it would be a motion to deny the continuance, I believe.
So I move that we deny SENS and CSEE's motion for continuance.
Second. Been moved and seconded to deny the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion is denied. So we are now at the point, is there any other preliminary matters that need to be taken care of at this point? I didn't think so. Great. Okay. So, at the request of SENS and PSE, at the request of SENS and PSE, I've given both sides an additional 15 minutes of oral argument. Our rules generally say 15 minutes is what you need in this case, and it is a large record. I've, it's up to the mayor to what to do with that, so I've doubled that to 30 minutes. Excuse me. The, we have heard from PSE and the city as to how they want to divide their time. Do you want to let us know how you wish to divide your time? And we'll still have a motion to open the public, the limited public hearing.
Members of the council, again, Richard Aramburu, the five appellants have conferred and have agreed upon the following time allocations. We will take 20 minutes for our principal presentation, reserving 10 minutes following the presentations of the city and PSE. I intend to speak for about 13 minutes, and then the other four parties will take the remaining 20 minutes of our initial period of time. So that's, that would be our allocation of time.
Okay, excellent. So they'll take the remaining seven minutes of that first 20. Is that correct?
Yep, 13 minus 20, yes, seven minutes. There we go. Okay, good.
I was listening.
I know, I know you are.
No one told me math was involved. So with that, I would ask for, I would ask, oh, and I believe, while we've heard, the PSE is going to take 20 minutes, and DSD will be taking 10 minutes, as I understand it, and you do not have rebuttal. So I'd entertain a motion to open the hearing.
I move that we open the hearing.
Second. Moved and seconded to open the appeal hearing. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, and we now have the hearing before us. So, was Mr. Aramburu, was the mic at the podium on? I...
It's on.
Yeah, okay, it's on, but, because it didn't sound, but if you would, these are very loud tonight, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there, but we're ready for the, for your time, Mr. Aramburu.
One preliminary matter, we had asked that the city put up on the screen, one of the pieces of the record. We conferred with the city about that before. Is that, is that possible?
Now, we have on our screen now here, do you want the, is, which one do you?
That's the one I want. Can that be expanded just a bit?
If I expand you, I'll use the question that the president's...
It's a little bit hard to read. Can you just expand it a bit? I think that'll do it. Can council members see that on their screen?
Yes, we actually can see it. We can see it much better than you can.
And do you, do you pick up my pointer on your screens?
I do not.
Okay. Well, let me go ahead and proceed, if I may. I'm Richard Aramburu. I'm an attorney representing SENS, a long-involved party in these proceedings before the, before the city. I know you've all read the briefs, or are going to read the briefs, and I'm here tonight to provide clarification, and I'm fully prepared to answer any questions you have. Feel free to interrupt me at any time if there's matters that you think need some further clarification. We're asking the council to remand this matter because of serious defects in the decision-making that have preceded our hearing tonight. One of the most important things for tonight is that the council has to keep its eye on the target. The target is the south segment, 3.3 miles that run from about Richards Creek down to the south boundary of the city. There is not a proposal that is filed for the rest of the project. You are limited to only that section for compliance with the code. Important to your review is Land Use Code Section 20.20.255. I will say, I've been practicing energy law for more than 40 years, and this ordinance that you passed in, in 2008 is a forward-thinking precedent-setting ordinance. It involves the council getting into multiple important matters for energy siting that is unknown in the rest of the country. Requiring an examination of operational need, requiring a site selection hierarchy in the code, requiring that there be a demonstration that electric facilities be in the area in which the customers that use them and need them are located. The issue before us tonight is not that wonderful ordinance that you passed, but whether or not there's been compliance with it, and that's the question that is before us. There's all sorts of material in the record, there's all sorts of material in the briefs. I want to talk about two things tonight for the council that are critical to your decision-making. The first of those is need. Your ordinance is very clear, there must be a demonstration of operational need that requires the location of the facility at the, at the proposed site. We contend that the, that the record demonstrates there is not a showing of operational need. Now, while there's been a lot of discussion about the parties and who their witnesses were, we don't have to go any farther than the three principal agencies that regulate and control electric facilities in the Northwest to show that operational need does not exist. First of all, the Bonneville Power Administration regulates transmission, sells power from the federal dams on the Columbia River. Two years ago, it canceled 79 miles of transmission because, and I'll quote, "Recent trends indicate load growth has generally slowed relative to what was assumed in our studies," is Bonneville Power Administration. They also said, in another quote, "We will, we will look at cutting-edge technologies such as battery storage, flow-control devices to proactively manage congestion and further extend operational capacity. No new transmission needed because there's not a need for it." Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission regulates, PSE regulates other private utility companies in the state of Washington. What does the WCT say about PSE? Again, quotes from, from the commission. Historically, PSE load forecasts have been overly optimistic. Reading through that, they've been too high. They always overestimate what the, what the needs are. This is from the WCT. WCT also says, "The 2017 Integrated Resource Plan projects flat to negative growth rates for the first 10 years of PSE's plan." Flat to negative growth. There is not a demonstration that there's need for this project. And finally, Seattle City Light, just across Lake Washington from us, another high-tech, growing industry, city with dozens of tower cranes, with Amazon, with Expedia, with all sorts of development going on. And the City Light, who provides electricity in Seattle, indicate there's runaway growth? No, as we provided in the record, their projections are that growth will fall in the city of Seattle despite the, essentially runaway growth. I live in Seattle, and I experience it every day. So, so the major agencies that regulate power say growth, that the kind of growth we've seen in the past simply does not exist anymore. And there's a footnote here. The lack of growth is creating serious financial issues in, in the electric industry. People are told not to use their, not to consume electricity. That means there's less revenue, and there's less revenue then to, to manage, to manage the growth. So, conclusion, yes? Growth of electrical demand. Your, your ordinance, 2008, requires that the applicant demonstrate that there is an operational need. PSE says there is an operational need based upon growth in electric consumption. We contest that proposition, and just given you what the major agencies have been, been saying on this issue. Operational need is not established for this facility. And so one of the key elements of this proposal lacks the demonstration to meter code. Second issue, what are we really dealing with here? And there's great confusion that's been created by the PSE's sudden and abrupt decision to only apply for this 3.3-mile line. We started, and the people at this table and the people in this room, in 2014 and 2015, and members of the council will remember this as well, it was a 16-mile line that we couldn't get along without. But now, we have a dead-end line. It runs up to the Lakeside Substation, and it stops. It doesn't go any farther. The rest of the line is not applied for, is not a part of the, the application. Now, PSE said, when they applied for just the short part of the line, they said, "Just wait, and we're going to apply for the rest of it, and we're going to get on with the whole thing, and we're going to do that." That's what they said in August 2017. Well, we're now in October of 2019, 26 months later, there's no application for that facility. The council cannot rely on what PSE says it might do to justify this project. You've got to look solely at this south segment of the, of the facility. And the, they claim that they have, they have considered the technical issues under your ordinance for just the south segment. Truth of the matter is, there's not one, one technical report that justifies, regulates, regards just the south segment. It's all on the bigger project. So you don't have in front of you the indications of, of what, what's really going on with the south segment. And that hasn't been a part of any of the record. So I'm going to ask PSE tonight to point to a, to a portion of this record in which there is that specific analysis, technical engineering analysis of just the south segment. The idea that we can just sort of cut off five miles of this line and, and it's the same project, simply, simply does not exist. There's not a showing, for example, of the operational need for the short project. There's not a showing that your code says that facilities will be put not in residential districts, but in districts which are primarily served by the electrical facility. The location-selection hierarchy, your words, your ordinance. What we end up with now is the area south of I-90 being the burden for providing electrical facilities, electrical energy, in the downtown, where we are right now, but with no burden on the downtown, all in the, all in the residential area. And that's what you said when you passed this ordinance, that we weren't going to do that. We have to show a very, very good reason why we put things in residential areas, why we put electric transmission and other facilities in residential areas instead of the areas in which they're being used. So, so this makes the area south of I-90 to be essentially the wire, the plug for downtown, with downtown not taking any, any of the responsibility or burden. So it raises other questions. We've had the south segment, okay, south segment down here. Why can't we have the north segment? Do the same thing. It's, it's one segment, dead ends. What's wrong with that? There's been no analysis of that, no consideration of that at all. Is really what's going on here a cynical effort by PSE to, to create conflict between neighborhoods in the city? Those north of I-90 and those south of I-90? To, to project conflict between Bridle Trails and Somerset? Is that what's going on with this, this really pretty much ridiculous proposition? Appears to us to be a divide-and-conquer situation. PSE says, "Well, it's fine to do this in segments because we are going to construct it in segments." Well, that, that reasoning doesn't stand up. Any project that you build, you start at one place and end another, but we're talking about permitting, and we're talking about justification under the city's ordinance that has not been done here. So that's what requires you to remand to the staff and, and others in the city to demand that we have technical analysis of the south segment, to find out if it's really independent, whether or not we can do the north segment, whether or not the idea of having a shorter segment of line opens a variety of other possibilities, including your code's requirement to talk about alternate technologies, very, very important part of your code. So we're asking the council to do two things in our request. Number one, remand the matter back so we can have some good technical information about this south segment idea, which we don't have. And number two, enter an order that we can look at this material, these models, this data from the city to really prove out whether or not there's really a need and a demand for this, for this facility. And there I go, zero. Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. If you have some questions, I'm happy to answer.
I, I think we'll go to Mr. Johnson next. Anyone have any question for Mr. Aramburu? No? Okay.
I'm going to be sitting over here, so...
Excellent.
I have a slide, too, which I hope we can, it's one, just one thing. There it is, yeah. Now, you may ask why, by the way, I'm going to take about a minute, I mean, 40 seconds. I'm going to take about 40 seconds. And this has given me several, oh, okay, I'll just watch it. Normally, I wouldn't take a page out of a brief and highlight it quite like this, but it causes an enormous amount of concern for several reasons. This brief, written by the same attorney who advises you taking an advocacy position for a department, I think right there is a big problem, but it's obvious from the way this hearing, this, this appeal began, that you're looking to her for guidance... her for guidance about how you're to run this entire process, and here she is providing an advocacy statement saying basically, "Don't read CSEE's appeal brief because it's all about constitutional law." And according to this case she signs, she shows Sabres to Snohomish County, she says, quote, "City Council has no authority to rule on constitutional issues." That is absolutely false, and that is a false and misleading reading of that case. The case says exactly the opposite. It says the council or the hearing examiner doesn't have any jurisdiction over equitable estoppel, legal doctrine, but the case goes into considerable detail about whether due process of law applied in denying people appropriate hearing notice violated due process rights. And so there was a long discussion in that opinion about indeed the application of due process of law. So please do read my brief because there are huge constitutional problems in what the hearing examiner did. And I outline them all, and I won't repeat everything in my brief. But there's one key thing that happened there that's clearly a violation of due process of law, and there's a whole string of federal cases on this point. You, as the appellate body, cannot really pass judgment on something where there's a ruling, where there's no findings of fact, no conclusions of law, no reasoning or anything, just denied. And that happened to two key motions between SENS and CISE about getting information that we were clearly entitled to and other issues, and we got nothing but denied. That was it. And I think right there is, again, if we get that back to the hearing examiner, he can at least tell you his reasons so you know how to rule. And I don't think that's much...
Quickly, Mr. Johnson, I cannot make, this is the DSD motion brief.
Yes.
I just, I can't make it out. What's the page number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, page 23 of their brief.
Page 23, perfect.
Right. And it's under this section, "The City Council does not have jurisdiction over challenges to the adequacy of the final IEIS or constitutional claims." That is outrageously wrong and misleading.
I know you're, the light's going off, so, yeah. I just, I don't want you to take away from others' time.
You bet. Okay. Nor do I. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I, there's four minutes and 40 seconds remaining. Do you want to reset the running clock?
I have one minute and 10 seconds.
Let's set the clock so that it's at the 4:30, and then when Mr. Hanson is done, we can pause it for the other appellants. Thank you. That way, we're all on track.
Are you ready? Okay. I'm speaking as an electrical engineer and a 47-year Bellevue resident and a longtime proponent for electrical power reliability. I started on this journey with the CAG, which was the privately-run organization to review the project back in 2012. So it's been seven years now. I have three points to make. Number one, PSE has consistently declined to provide necessary transparency of the current project load flow data to support the need for appropriate review by the qualified public. We're not terrorists. It feels to me like that the data has been fabricated to masquerade the truth. Point two, PSE needs to conduct other alternate solutions in good faith. Energize Eastside is a project solution which is a carryover from the last century. They originally built this line in 1929, and they're trying to duplicate actually what they have. Point three, respect the land use code to locate electrical facilities and land use districts where needed. Somerset and other neighborhoods certainly do not have a demonstrated need for more electrical power. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Halverson.
I will need about one minute and 30, one minute and 40 seconds. The written brief that I submitted for your consideration shows significant errors in the hearing examiner's findings, and I've noted those. The public involvement findings are often biased and inaccurate. The hearing examiner seems to give PSE's paid consultants extra credence while citizen experts are casually dismissed without much explanation. The record does not fully report or rebut witness Dean Apostles' testimony and his study visual and aesthetic impacts on Bellevue and Bellevue South. PSE continues to stand by Aqanta's 2014 forecast of demand for electricity growing at a rate of 2.4% per year. PSE has adjusted its forecast downward in subsequent years, but the company has not updated this crucial east side forecast. PSE even admits in a hearing to more recent studies in 2016, 17, and 18, yet the company refuses to share actual peak demand data for the east side, perhaps because that data might jeopardize their rationale for this project. The lack of transparency is a big problem. How can we justify spending hundreds of millions of dollars and destroying thousands of trees if we don't know the facts about our electricity usage? We voted for transparency in our government, and this is a major test of the commitment in Bellevue. I have been involved in this project from the beginning, six years and scores of meetings. Never once did we see discussion of segmentation into Bellevue South and North for permitting purposes. Why did PSE split the project into two parts? Is PSE admitting that the need has lessened? Are other alternatives now feasible? Please reject this permit, or at least remand the case to the hearing examiner so that we can get some clear answers and transparent data about the real need for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lopez, and how much time do we have left?
How much time do we have left? We have one minute?
Wait, I didn't start yet. I need to get four more seconds. Throughout the six-plus years of this project, we have studied 18 miles, now it's changed to 16, but let's say it's 16, of the entire system. And now, PSE wants to snip that system and make it 3.3 without any analysis, without any, how shall I say, without any evidence. So I request this. Require PSE to present data, studies, and reports of the 3.3-mile segment as an independent segment. Require analysis of the electrical power need in neighborhoods within the 3.3 segment. Require PSE to release the underlying data, which PSE asserts is the basis for the need for the project. There are legal mechanisms for this process and for keeping the data confidential. And number three, or continue the hearing to address the entire project with proper notice to all residents north and south. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that is the first 20 minutes, and you are right, and you're reserving 10 for rebuttal. That's correct. Okay, so we now have DSD and Puget Sound Energy. Mr. McFarland, you're going to go first representing DSD.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Matt McFarland, Attorney for Development Services Department. I'd like to begin by reminding council again of its role in adjudicating these appeals. Energize Eastside project and PSE's CUP application are matters of significant public interest, but the only issue before council is whether to grant or deny these five appeals. Despite the public support for and opposition to PSE's proposal, council's role here is very narrow. As the city attorney mentioned, council's decision is a legal decision. It's not a policy decision. It's not a political decision. Any decision on this appeal, whether by council or a different decision-maker that is divorced from the facts, the underlying record, and the controlling law, and is instead based on community displeasure, will not survive judicial scrutiny. Your decision may, and most likely will, be appealed to the Superior Court, and a judge will determine whether your decision is supported by the law and supported by the record. Given that your review is limited to this record, I think it's very important for council to review the hearing examiner's explanation at paragraph 77 and 82 of his decision of why the city has developed such a large record for this conditional use permit application. The hearing examiner points out that SENS, CSEE, and their members have been opposing the Energize Eastside project for many years. This opposition is a healthy and critical part of the environmental review and land use processes. This public comment and opposition is exactly what led to the thorough analysis contained in the record supporting approval of PSE's CUP. For example, public participation directly resulted in the independent technical analysis showing project need. Public participation resulted in the conditions of approval recommended by the department and adopted by the hearing examiner addressing pipeline safety. Public comment informed the environmental record developed by the partner cities of Bellevue, Redmond, Renton, and Newcastle during the EIS process. This record encompasses five years of environmental review undertaken by the partner cities that fully analyzes environmental impacts of the entire Energize Eastside project and evaluates alternatives, including non-wire alternatives and the no-action alternative. This is the most intense and comprehensive environmental review required by law. Public comment, along with the city regulations adopted by council that Mr. Aramburu has referred to, also forced PSE to justify this project. PSE was required at each step of the land use process to show its work and establish that its CUP application satisfies the applicable land use code decision criteria and warrants approval by the city. Despite this massive record, the good news for council is once again that its role is very limited and constrained by law. Council simply reviews the hearing examiner decision with deference and decides that the decision is supported by the evidence in the record. Council is not required to reweigh any evidence, or revisit the technical studies supporting approval, or judge the credibility of the members of the public or the experts who testified during the public hearing. The hearing examiner has already completed all of that work, and council need only review the decision and decide if it's supported by the record. Now, I represent the department. I don't represent council. There seems to be some confusion on that matter. The department, Development Services Department, does believe that the hearing examiner's decision is supported by material and substantial evidence in the record. DSD has provided council with a 25-page response. We also provided an attachment A that gives you a roadmap to all of the evidence in the record supporting the decision. DSD included attachment A to help council manage this voluminous record and better understand why these appeals should be denied based on that record. I'm not going to repeat all the information DSD has briefed, but I do want to focus on a few specific arguments that have been raised tonight. First, I'll focus on the alternatives and segmentation arguments that SENS and its members have been raising since at least 2017. It is important to remember that the purpose of the Energize Eastside project is to meet local peak demand and to protect reliability in the east side of Keene County. With this purpose in mind, PSE's application contains two components, the Richard Creek substation and the upgrade of 3.3 miles of existing transmission lines in south Bellevue. The substation is the driving piece of the proposal, but PSE also requests that the city approve the replacement of existing poles and transmission lines within the existing utility corridor. This existing corridor was established in the 1920s and 1930s. PSE's proposal by its very nature requires the city to balance the need for reliable and sustainable utility services for all Bellevue citizens with the environmental and land use values that the city prioritizes in its policies and code. Simply put, the record shows that by using the existing corridor, PSE's chosen alternative is compatible with the uses and development that have been built up around this transmission line for decades. None of the five appeals before council acknowledge, much less discuss, the fact that the least impactful feasible alternative identified by PSE is to use the existing utility corridor to upgrade the transmission line. Contrary to SENS's argument, the location-selection hierarchy in 2020/255D requires that PSE consider non-residential land use districts, but the code certainly does not require the creation of an entirely new utility corridor based on public opposition to the project. This is especially true when the record shows the continued use of the existing corridor is the least impactful feasible alternative. The city can decide if the proposed project is consistent with the applicable city regulations, including the regulations Mr. Aramburu referenced tonight, but it cannot require PSE to build an alternative that the applicant does not see as feasible. Second, it's very important for council to understand that phased construction and permitting for a linear infrastructure project is not an example of piecemeal environmental review. In fact, it's the opposite. Even if the north and south segments are combined under SEPA for environmental review purposes, this does not mean they have to be combined for land use permitting purposes. The department addressed this argument in quite some detail at pages 66 to 84 of the hearing examiner report, and I would strongly encourage the council to read that portion of the record, as well as pages 16 to 20 of the department's pre-hearing brief. SENS and its members are now representing the council incorrectly that PSE's justification for the phased construction project was a last-minute change to the project that somehow caught the public by surprise. This argument is not supported by the record because SENS first raised its segmentation argument all the way back on August 31, 2017. Thereafter, SENS continued to raise this argument for the next two years, up to and including during the public hearing before the hearing examiner. I would refer council and the city attorney to pages 5033 through 5036 and 5431 through 5443 of the record, which shows just how early and often SENS raised this segmentation argument over the past two years. Nevertheless, the roar of this argument does not make it meritorious or legally defensible. Finally, within this massive record, there are, and there have always been, five specific items where DSD has provided enhanced analysis. Consistency with the city's comp plan, compliance with the applicable land use code decision criteria, tree removal and replacement, aesthetic and scenic view impacts in the Somerset neighborhood, and pipeline safety. As I explained at the outset, the department heard thoughtful public comments over the last four years and focused its attention on these five specific areas when evaluating PSE's proposal and issuing the director's recommendation in the staff report. The appellants are now claiming that approval of the south Bellevue segment is somehow approval of the north Bellevue segment that the city has not, a north Bellevue segment permit application that the city hasn't even received. This argument has no legal support whatsoever, but I do want to remind council that if and or when PSE seeks a permit for the north Bellevue segment, the city will then review this new application based on a new record developed under a different provision in the land use code, a new staff report and director's recommendation, including new conditions based on the new record, a new public hearing before the hearing examiner, and a new decision or recommendation from the hearing examiner.
Mr. McFarland, how does the neighborhoods in the hierarchy benefit at all, if at all, from this project? What was DSD's finding there?
Well, I think the hearing examiner has hit that right on the head. He said corrective action plans, blackouts affect everybody. And he says that in his decision. And it doesn't matter if you live in a commercial district, if you're a hospital, if you're a nursing home, if you're a residential citizen, blackouts affect everybody. As we sit here tonight, the only issue before council is this record and whether it supports this hearing examiner decision. Now, I'll stay for the remainder of the hearing. If you have any follow-up questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson. And how much time is remaining?
20 minutes.
20 minutes, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here with my colleague, Sarah Levert. We are legal counsel for Puget Sound Energy. I support the city's hearing examiner decision approving the issuance of a CUP for this project with the conditions that were recommended by the city planning department and, in fact, imposed by the hearing examiner. They are based on substantial evidence in the record, which is carefully detailed in his decision. Both the hearing examiner's decision and the PSE table at the end of our memorandum submitted to you contain citations to the record supporting his findings and conclusions. When I refer to record, I appreciate that we're talking about a whopper here. 15,000 pages is a lot. I have been a city attorney, and I've been legal counsel to land use departments for cities nearly my entire career. This is not easy. It's tough to get through this kind of record. I appreciate your time tonight and beyond tonight to go through that record in its entirety... I appreciate your time tonight and beyond tonight to go through that record in its entirety, as well as the hearing examiner's decision. Turning to the project itself, transmission lines and poles are in allowed use in every single land use district in the city of Bellevue, every one of them. The CUP that's before you tonight is a mechanism by which the city can require special conditions on development or on the use of land to ensure that designated uses—transmission line, houses, businesses—are compatible with the other uses in the same land use district or in the subject property. This is in your code. Insofar as incompatibility of land uses, there are two facts that are not in dispute tonight, and you won't find it in the record. One, the PSC utility corridor where Puget proposes this upgrade has been in the same location for nearly 100 years. And two, there is no change to land use whatsoever as a result of this proposal, none. Today, a high-voltage transmission line is surrounded by houses and businesses. That won't change as a result of this project, and in the words of Bellevue's Land Use Code 2030B120, Energize is—and I quote—compatible with other uses in the same land use district and in the vicinity of the subject property. There is not one shred of evidence in 15,000 pages that suggests that reliable electricity is not desired by anybody inside the city of Bellevue. What has changed, you might ask? Since these current lines were installed, Bellevue has experienced eightfold growth and impacts to the company's transmission system reliability when peak demand for power is made. The term "peak demand" is critical to this proposal. Peak demand is that amount of electricity that all customers may simultaneously demand at any given moment. PSC's transmission system must be able to handle peak demand at all times, regardless of what is happening elsewhere on the grid, in Bellevue, or in the company's system. All PSC customers in Bellevue and beyond are entitled to as much electricity as they demand at any given moment as a matter of law. That means the company has a legal obligation to ensure that it can deliver at all times. Neither load growth, as Mr. Aramburu and many materials in the record refer, nor annual demand are the measure that this company has to meet. It is the precise peak demand that it has to plan to. PSC's Director of System Operations testified at the public hearing that unplanned transmission deficiencies can give rise to unplanned outages. As a safeguard, the company is required to have correction action plans in place for such situations. Corrective action plans include forced load shedding, which means deliberate blackouts. They can be taken when the transmission system fails, but Washington law requires PSC to deliver reliable continuous power to its customer at all times, meaning that caps being used as a substitute for reliable electricity is not acceptable. PSC has been watching the growth in the east side, including Bellevue, for decades. I'm sure you all have experienced it as well. They've been watching it to see what effects the growth may have on continued reliability of its transmission system. The company's existing utility corridor has been shown in the Bellevue comp plan since 1993 as the route that would be used for transmission upgrades if and when they become necessary. This has also been in the company's system plan for decades. Historically, utilities have been expected to act responsibly and study and upgrade its system before reliability deficiencies emerge, but in 2007, it became a mandatory legal duty to assess its transmission system's reliability under a specific range of scenarios and stressors. When a deficiency is identified, the company must plan accordingly for system upgrades in order to handle future peak demand without interruption. The methodology for conducting transmission reliability studies and planning is established by federal regulations developed by NERC. Both winter and summer peak demand must be analyzed because electric customers rely on power every season of the year. Utilities are audited for their compliance with these regulations, and they are subject to fines for failure to study the need for and then plan transmission upgrades. Today, the law requires that PSC demonstrate that it plans 10 years in advance to avoid transmission failures. That shouldn't come as a surprise, considering that this conversation has been going on for six years. Ten years is a reasonable future to require a utility to look into, even though it's hard to do. It's not easy without a crystal ball to predict what peak demand is going to be in 10 years. Bellevue's Land Use Code also requires that PSC show its work—the work that it did when it determined that it needed to upgrade its transmission infrastructure to address reliability deficiencies. At the heart of this appeal is the question of whether there is substantial evidence in the record that supports the hearing examiner's decision that PSC now needs to upgrade in place its 55-year-old transmission line. As the record demonstrates, the company's Director of Planning, Catherine Koch, testified why reliability studies became mandatory in 2007. She's been a transmission planner and licensed engineer her entire life, all of which has been spent—her entire career, I should say. She didn't come out of the womb as an engineer, but she's spent her entire career at PSC doing this kind of planning. She has guided the company from an era when adhering to NERC standards was voluntary to today, when compliance is mandatory, companies are audited, and if the audits disclose planning inadequacies, they get fined. She herself led the company through this era of change to transmission planning and personally developed the company's Transmission Reliability Compliance Plan, which has successfully passed every audit since 2007. Meeting the standards themselves is exacting, and there is very little discretion in how utilities show they're meeting them. The contingencies and stressors to a transmission system that must be included in these studies is also prescribed by law. The company cannot pick and choose which to study and which to ignore, and, as I stated earlier, the studies have to be done for both winter and summer. This is in part because transmission systems can handle more power in the winter—or we call it higher-rated—because the cool air in winter helps cool electric system components down, which allows them to run most efficiently. In the summer, the higher temperatures don't allow for that cool weather cooling, and very hot days further limit the operating range of the very same equipment that functions better in the winter. Consequently, transmission system reliability models must assess the system's reliability for both peak demand in summer and winter. Looking at one is not enough. PSC's Manager of Transmission Planning, Jen Nedrud, is a licensed engineer who has also spent his career doing transmission reliability work. He testified that the company does such studies, which take months, and that they do them every single year. After first—I, excuse me, as I've earlier identified, PSC's been watching this situation in the east side for decades. This is not a quick rush for money. It's not some quick bait and switch. They've been watching this for decades. If it were a cash grab, this would have been done in 1993, when it was first put in your comprehensive plan. Maybe it would have been done earlier than that. Maybe it would have been done later than that, but the company has instead looked 10 years into the future, year after year, and held back on seeking this upgrade. Studied it every year, got audited, and didn't do anything. Finally, in 2012, after years and years of study, the reports finally demonstrated that capacity and reliability deficiencies on the 115 line in Bellevue is likely to result in transmission system failure as early as winter of 2017-18 and the summer of 2018. In fact, the system did exceed the summer limits twice, both times earlier than projected. Mr. Nedrud certified to this in writing. His testimony at hearing is that this proposal enhances transmission reliability to customers served and to the reliability of the system as a whole, and that includes the east side, including Bellevue. The company's studies demonstrate that the consequences of a transmission system failure were significant. As I indicated, however, they did not rush to judgment immediately in 1993 or in 2009 when this first started shaping up as something real in a defined date in the horizon. Instead, they sought professional peer review of their own studies by Quanta, which is a professional transmission reliability deficiency analysis company. That's a mouthful. Quanta's 2013 study confirmed PSC's methodologies were applied correctly and affirmed PSC's conclusion that this project's need was real and timely. PSC then initiated outreach to the public and the city about proposing to upgrade the existing line. In 2015, Quanta updated its own study, which confirmed its 2013 conclusions. Parenthetically, PSC continued to do its annual assessments internally as required by federal law. There is no error in PSC's decision to get a second opinion by Quanta or measure twice before cutting once. In this case, the company took measured and professionally informed looks every single year at its situation, and it still does today. However, the city of Bellevue and its constituents, including the appellant's here tonight, were not satisfied with relying simply on PSC's studies. They weren't satisfied with relying on Quanta's peer reviews to conclude there was a need for the project, and because of this, you, Bellevue, elected officials, commissioned, required, and then commissioned its own assessment. You did your own assessment of the company's submittals, and with the input of CINC and others, you, the city of Bellevue, developed a list of questions that the study's author would have to answer to demonstrate that PSC's conclusions were correct. Bellevue hired a company called USE to answer those questions and to assess the accuracy of PSC's work. USE answered the public, including CINC's questions, and, in fact, concluded that PSC had performed its assessment accurately. Also around the same time, despite the USE study, the four SEPA cities of Redmond, Bellevue, Newcastle, and Renton independently hired yet another consulting firm, Stantec, to also independently assess PSC's work. Stantec's independent work again confirmed PSC's assessment that the project was needed to address a transmission deficiency in the east side. Separate from the city's studies and dissatisfied with PSC's studies and Quanta's work, CINC and CSEE separately had their own competing study prepared, today referred to as the Lockhart-Shifman Load Study. Mr. Lockhart was a transmission planner for PSC from 1975 to 1976, over 30 years before the NERC standards became mandatory. The Lockhart-Shifman study used a base case that was provided to them by FERC. After running their own study, using their own choice of stressors and contingencies, it concluded Energize Eastside is not needed. Peak demand, however, was not evaluated in accordance with the NERC standards. Nevertheless, armed with this study—which is also in the record that the hearing examiner considered—CINC and CSEE challenged Puget's work in a lawsuit at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Even with the load flow materials provided by the petitioners, FERC found no error in PSC's methodology and found no error that PSC concluded Energize Eastside is needed, and it rejected that appeal. At hearing, in addition to the Lockhart-Shifman study, CINC also submitted a Needs and Costs study prepared by Robert McCullough and a historical summation done by Mr. Don Marsh of CINC's opposition to the project, all of which was purported as evidence that the project is not needed. On the record, Mr. McCullough admitted to errors in his study, which, when they were corrected, actually supports the need for this project. Mr. Marsh's summation speaks to load growth. Mr. Aramburu's presentation tonight does as well. That fails to address the heart of the issue here. The issue is need driven by peak demand. On the day when it's hotter than all get out and everybody is cranking it up, or when it's terribly cold, or when there are other failures inside the larger grid, PSC still has to guarantee that it can deliver. That's why their studies take months and months to do, and they're required to do them year after year, and that they're audited over and over for, and for which they have gotten multiple peer reviews, and for which the city has gone out and paid its own money to also peer review. The hearing examiner describes the substantial evidence that supports his decision. This includes testimony from PSC's transmission planning experts, Ms. Koch and Mr. Nedrud. They address that PSC conducts transmission reliability studies annually in accordance with federal law, that their work is regularly audited for compliance. PSC's never failed any of these audits. He weighed the two Quanta engineering reports that peer-reviewed Puget's work, and then he assessed the USE and Stantec reports that independently assess PSC and Quanta's work. Against that information, he weighed Mr. McCullough's admittedly erroneous work and Mr. Marsh's summation that simply ignores peak demand. Indeed, in Finding 57A, the hearing examiner states that having, quote, "read and reread the opposition reports and evidence and the independent studies prepared by Stantec and USE, one finding and conclusion became crystal clear. The applicant reports, forecasts, and data analyses were in compliance with applicable industry standards." The opponent's failed to rebut the independent consultant reviews of PSC's work involved in this application process, all of which concluded that PSC was planning and reviewing data in accord with industry practice and standard. As for the single study, the project opponents introduced to counter all of PSC's studies, peer reviews, testimony, and evidence in support of the need for Energize Eastside. At Finding 57E, the hearing examiner found, just like FERC, that Lockhart-Shifman study was insufficient to overcome the large body of evidence supporting Energize Eastside. Quote, "Mr. Lockhart alleged flaws in the load flow reports that PSC relied upon to demonstrate need for its Energize Eastside project, among other things. He did not rebut the favorable reviews provided by independent consultants engaged by the city regarding PSC's supporting studies. Mr. Lockhart and the other project opponents did not demonstrate that the studies used by PSC violated any transmission planning requirements or were otherwise unjust, unreasonable, or unduly discriminatory or preferential. Opponents do not cite anything that would require PSC to use the study inputs that they prefer over the inputs and assumptions that PSC used." Unquote. What is the one thing not in contention here tonight? There is not a single shred of evidence in this record suggesting that safe and reliable power is not needed for the modern life that every one of us enjoys, mind not depends on. In close, statistics on static or declining energy use are reflecting a decline in the average use per year by customer. That is but only one element of electric transmission reliability system planning, energy use on a customer basis. You should not be confused by this. The number of customers continues to increase. Individual demand may be flat, but the volume of customers continues to increase and has increased eightfold since this line was built. The aggregate peak demand is continuing to increase and strain PSC's system. It is the growth in peak demand that drives the size and amount of infrastructure required. To summarize what you and the hearing examiner had before you regarding need, PSC's analysis alone includes annual reviews from 2009 through 2018, over 35,000 permutations of contingencies, millions of scenarios, including sensitivity cases modeled that are required by federal law, NERC-compliant assessments, successful audits, all performed using the same methodology applied to all other regional utilities, affirmation by FERC, and accurately projected need by summer of 2018, reviewed by USE, Stantec, and Quanta. To counter—
Time is up.
Great. I would submit that the materials in opposition have not been submitted to third-party review, and there is substantial record evidence that supports the hearing examiner's decision. That's your challenge. Does that evidence exist? Thank you.
Thank you very much. For rebuttal, Mr. Aramburu, are you going to handle it, or are you going to split it up?
I'm going to be the person delivering this. And would you mind putting that drawing back up again for me, please? And if, would you mind putting that, the drawing back up again for me, please? Well, I'm reminded as I listen to the presentation by Ms. Anderson of another Anderson who wrote, "The emperor has no clothes." And the emperor does have no clothes here. When I was up here for my opening comments, I asked PSE to identify a single report, a single report that deals with the south segment, just with the south segment. There was no answer to that material. Now, what they like to talk about is, well, we have the StanTech report, we have two Qanta reports, we have the USE report, we have the FERC decision. All of them share one thing in common: didn't deal with this project. It's not this project. It's not the south segment. All the way along through all of this work, it was indicated that the, that the project that was necessary and proposed was the run that ran 16 miles from Renton to Redmond. That was the project. There hasn't been a study on this 3.3-mile little dead-end project. Now, that's important because your code requires an applicant to produce information, and your decision criteria says the applicant shall demonstrate an operational need exists that requires the location or expansion at the proposed site, 3.3 miles. Is there a proof that an operational need requires a 3.3-mile segment of this, of this line? Of course not. There isn't. Doesn't exist. Subsection 5B of the decision criteria in your wonderful ordinance of 2008, where feasible the prudent, the preferred alternative identified is located within the land use district requiring additional service, and residential land use districts are to be avoided. Well, is there, is there any showing that the south segment is the section that needs additional service? Well, of course not. Everyone admits that the growth in Bellevue, on the growth in the east side is centered in the downtown area, in the spring district, and the other places in the downtown part of, of the city, not in the Somerset area, not in the 3.2 miles, which is 80% residential through which that line runs. There's been no proof of any indication that any of those, those residents in that area need this facility at all. So, the standard, and Mr. McFarland helped us out here by saying, well, is there material and substantial evidence that supports the decision? There isn't, because there isn't any evidence about the south segment. Now, this is important because we, we have labored in hearing after hearing and meeting after meeting and reading thousands of pages of an environmental impact statement, and none of them dealt with the south segment. None of them did that. Mr. Halverson, Mr. Hanson, Ms. Lopez, and a lot of the people in the orange shirts here tonight went to those meetings, and you know what? There wasn't a single disclosure that maybe PSE could get by with half a project. Not a single disclosure. These people sat for hours, hundreds of hours. No, no such disclosure. The emperor does indeed have no clothes. Now, PSE says, well, we're just going to build this south segment now, and maybe we're going to build a north segment later. When? Well, it's been two and a half, two, 26 months. No application has been forthcoming. Doesn't appear one's going to be happening anytime soon. Is this something that we ought to worry about for brownouts, blackouts, these horrible things that are going to happen in the winter of 2018, when they don't even have enough interest to finish the, the last 5.3 miles of it in Bellevue? Does that make any sense? Does that make any sense from a business standpoint, from a utility standpoint? It, it doesn't make any sense at all. There isn't substantial evidence that, that supports this decision. So, Ms. Anderson says, well, we're very careful over here at PSE. We do everything right. We dot the, dot the i's, cross the t's, whatever it is, and we do all those things over here. And if that's true, why does the Utility and Transportation Commission say that PSE has consistently exaggerated its growth rates? I mean, these are people whose job it is to look after PSE. Why do they say that? And why, in fact, between 2012 and 2014, when PSE suggested there would be a growth increase of 1.5%, in fact, it dropped by 1.3%, almost a 3% difference. Are these people that can be trusted with this situation, keeping in mind that they enjoy something I wish I had in my business, and lots of business people would love to have, a guaranteed rate of return on, on these investments? They, they, they are going to take all the money from here tonight, Ms. Anderson's bills, everybody else's bills, they're going to be folded into the rate base, and they're going to be paid for by the people in this room and you people on the council. Now, and has the Utilities and Transportation Commission ever turned down PSE for an investment? The UTC person in charge of these things came before this council in 2014, in July of 2014, and council members may remember, but he said, no, we don't. We've never done that. That's not something we do down here. PSE gets what it wants from the UTC. So, there's not a demonstration of need, there's not a demonstration that there has been the kind of analysis necessary to determine compliance with your own ordinance. What the council needs to do, and this is our request, is to do two things. One, remanded back and require that the staff and hearing examiner have technical detailed studies on this south segment. We think if that work was done, that if we can get by with half of the line, maybe we don't need any of the line, and we think that's what that analysis would show. But at least it needs to be done to comply with the, with the ordinance. Secondly, we need to look at the data. They talk about transparency, but they don't, they don't show their data. We've asked them for years and years and years. Tell us what these peak, these peak demands are. When did these things occur? How big are they? Well, no, we can't give that to you because, well, we have these security responsibilities, and these, these people are not people that can really be trusted with, with this information. Truth of matter is, peak numbers for how much power is being used at this moment in the city of Bellevue are available and can be provided and to help you and your constituents determine whether or not there really is a need. Are things really going up? Are they, are we really risking brownouts and blackouts? Is the sky going to fall? We don't have that information. The hearing examiner erred when he did not require PSE to produce that information. And it's not security information. It doesn't talk about individual customers. We just want the data for individual substations within the city. Easy stuff to get. And wouldn't you like to know if PSE's predictions are really coming true? Wouldn't you like to know if, if in fact tomorrow night, everything we see out here is going to go dark? Well, just as in anything else you do in utilities and other things, you look at the past performance, and you find out whether that past performance indicates that there's a need to do something. You don't have that information. You need it to make your decision. So, where are we? 28 seconds, 27. We think need has not been shown, and need has not been certainly shown for the south segment. It should be turned down on that basis. It should be remanded back to get that detailed electrical, technical, engineering information that's necessary, and the data indicated that we've requested be made available to us. And there we go. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. So, I think what, what I'm going to do at the moment is just ask if council members do have any questions of the parties. If that's, and this would be specific to the parties. If not, we have a voluminous record that is before us, which is what we actually have to rule on. Clearly, they could not talk in 60 minutes about everything that is in the, in the 15,000 pages here. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Robinson.
So, Ms. Anderson, in your brief here and also in your testimony, you talk about the energy demand is continuing to increase and strain the system. Do you have the data that supports that?
Good evening, everybody, and deputy mayor in particular. I didn't say that demand is straining the system. I said that peak demand is testing the reliability of this system to continue to perform. That's what federal law requires, not demand. And I will analogize, and I'm sure it will drive my client crazy, but I'll analogize to a sewer pipe, because you're in the business of utilities as well. So, stay with me. Let's assume that a sewer pipe receives 365,000 gallons of sewer per year. Might go up a little teeny bit, but the demand is pretty much 365,000 gallons per year. If I break that out, the line is not sized for 24,000 gallons per day, or 1,000 gallons per hour, because that's not what your pipelines are sized for. Your pipelines are sized for when everybody's flushing the toilet at the same time, doing their laundry and taking showers, getting ready for school. They're sized larger to handle peak demand. That's what PSE is struggling with here. And peak demand exists in Bellevue, up and down the corridor. It has been studied in all of the citations to, all of those studies are in my brief. It looks at peak demand in Bellevue in its entirety. It strains the reliability of the entire east side system. That's what your code criteria requires we analyze. Mr. McFarland addressed that very carefully in his brief, what the code actually reads.
Can I clarify my question, then?
Sure.
So, in your memo, you, you say that the actual PSE data showing that the east side grid had exceeded summer performance capacity multiple times in the summers of 2018 and 2019, and you also say that PSE's actual real-time data shows that the need for the project is now. So, I'm wondering, when your footnote there is testimony for, by Mr. Koch, so, or, I don't know his name.
Koch.
Koch, thank you. So, is there datas to support what he's saying there somewhere in the record?
There is. You will find it in the Qanta reports that are in the record. The citations to those actual pages are in the hearing examiner's memorandum decision. I don't have the exact pages. I believe they started around page 33. You'll also find those citations in a chart that is attached to my memo to you, and it includes citations to...
I couldn't find that one.
Beg your pardon?
I was unable to find that one, particular one. I don't know if you can get back to me, or if I just need to search a little harder for this, but...
What I'm, what Ms. Leverett has indicated to me is the '27 and 2018 dates are wrong. We're not talking 2019, is that right?
Yeah, '27 and '18 actually, the summer exceeded the level of the utility...
Okay, so that, that was not picked up by the microphone. You said the 2017 and 2018 datas exceeded?
Right.
Right.
So, this is incorrect in the memo?
So, the...
Yeah. I have my dates wrong, but the data was exceeded two times.
Okay.
I'm not sure I'm getting to your question, and I see, I see council members...
I think, I think we can get to the, I think we can get to that outside of, of this.
Okay.
So, I'm going to actually ask if there is anything that you would like to say on, on this issue. I did not anticipate that we would have a question that had that long of an answer. So, would you like to speak to this question?
I have the, the exact citation in the hearing examiner's record, if you'd like it.
Would you just, we'll pass it through Ms. Gerla. I'm, I'm sure that we can find it. Mr. Aramburu.
I'll be brief, and it's a long record, but I, I do not recall that the data, the specific data, the fine data for 2018, 2017 has, has, is found in the record. The, the, the Qanta reports are all before then, so you can't cite those. The city, the city asked the, the PSE about how things were going in the summertime, and they said, well, we've exceeded this, but they didn't give any data. This is a data-driven process, and that data hasn't been, been produced, and it's not in the record.
Thank you.
May I have one word on that?
One quick word, Mr. Johnson.
It will be four.
Just, just to give this an additional important context, I mentioned two motions that were denied by the hearing examiner without reason in violation of a number of cases on due process. Those motions dealt with the specific data, and it was very clear that this was the only way we were going to be able to present our case, and astonishingly, that was denied without reason. We don't know why, and I think we should find out. You should find out, so you can do your job.
Those were the motions that you were asking the hearing examiner to compel PSE to give you the, the data that I believe PSE says is covered by, I don't know if we're really getting into it, but I think CSII?
CEI.
CEI.
Just, just give a little flavor, because I don't want to take up a lot of time. There are two motions?
Yeah, okay, so...
One motion was to get this information, including local, localized Bellevue, what do you call them? Stations, power stations?
Power, substations.
Substations, rather than service-wide. Service-wide gave us nothing, localized what we need. The second one was, we move for continuance so that we wouldn't be doing what we're doing now twice, so that...
Okay.
This thing should have been held up until both segments were in one deal.
That, that was not what the hearing, the hearing examiner ruled against you on that, I understand. So, we're not going to get into argument on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to suggest that we, that that be it. I don't think there are any other questions. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move that we close the hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and segmented to close the hearing on this quasi-judicial matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I do want to thank the parties. You have briefed this remarkably well. The record is remarkable in, in its just simple mass amount. I forget how much work has been done, and including that work that has been assisted by our citizens here in Bellevue. I also want to thank all of the parties, so I also want to make sure that I, I mention PSE and DSD in the work that they did. In particular, for us as mostly laypeople on the council, the ability and the work that is done by our staff to be able to put this record into a usable, into a, a way that we can use it is, is really terrific. It goes beyond belief to have been able to put this amount of, of record onto, onto our, the sticks that we were able to use. I will tell you, being stuck on an airplane, four hours one way and four hours back, I got a lot of work done last weekend, so, and it was because our staff was able to do that. So, again, thank you. Thank you for your participation. We will, we will be adjourning... We will be adjourning from the meeting tonight. There will be no decision, as I said, tonight. Given the amount of record, I think it's going to take a number of weeks before we are ready to be able to come back into public session and be able to have a discussion about that. So, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking if this is the 16th, it would not surprise me if we are 30 days out. That wouldn't surprise me. I don't want, yes, Mr. Aramburu.
Will you be giving the parties notice when you...
Of course. We will be giving the parties notice. We will. So, we will, as we get closer to being able to have that date, and we know it, we will give you as much advance notice as we can. Is there a requirement under, do we have anything in the code that requires a certain days? I know we met the 14-day requirement about this hearing.
I don't believe there's anything in the code about notice requirements, but obviously we would notify the parties of the date, and it would be on the council's agenda, which is always published well before the 48-hour notice.
Yeah, and it is, there is the potential that we would not do this on a council-agenda night. There's the potential, like tonight, that we would do it on a non-council night. You don't need to sit through a couple of dozen proclamations and Mr. Zimmerman, for those of you who know Mr. Zimmerman. So, again, I think it will be a while. We will get notice to the parties. I think the parties, if you can get notice out to the people who are your members, that would be helpful. We'll try to give you as much advance notice as is possible. We have, we will provide also then, especially if it is a special meeting, we'll provide special notice to those who are on file for getting a special meeting notice. If not, it could possibly be on a regular agenda. And I can't give you a specific answer tonight, and I apologize for that, but it's a big record. Okay. There is no further business to come before the council tonight. We're adjourned.